Session resumed. Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, before I begin, may I greet the Deputy Speaker. Madam Speaker, before I begin, may I greet the Deputy Speaker. A happy birthday. A happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Majority Leader. Yes, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up the reference of business and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the Measures on First Reading as well as Communications and Resolutions. Madam Speaker, I move that we take up the reference of business and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the Measures on First Reading as well as Communications and Resolutions. So move, Madam Speaker. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read Bills on First Reading. The Secretary General is directed to read Bills on First Reading.
Additional Reference of Business.
Additional Reference of Business.
Bills on First Reading.
Bills on First Reading.
House Bill Number 5781.
House Bill Number 5781.
Declaring the City of Lasena as the Financial District of the entire province of Quezon.
Declaring the City of Lasena as the Financial District of the entire province of Quezon.
Representative Suarez David Villarasa Suarez and Suarez Aleta.
Representative Suarez David Villarasa Suarez and Suarez Aleta.
To the Committee on Local Government. To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5782.
House Bill Number 5782.
Granting distinct honors and privileges to national athletes.
Granting distinct honors and privileges to national athletes.
Creating a National Endowment Fund for Sports Heroes.
Creating a national endowment fund for sports heroes.
Representative Fortune.
Representative Fortune.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development. To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill Number 5783.
House Bill Number 5783.
Magna Carta for Private School Teachers.
Magna Carta for private school teachers.
Representative Castro Franz, Zarate, Gaite, Culyamat, Brosas and Ilago.
Representative Castro Franz, Zarate, Gaite, Culyamat, Brosas and Ilago.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5784.
House Bill Number 5784.
Mending RE Number 7076.
Mending RE Number 7076.
Otherwise known as the People's Small-Scale Mining Act of 1991.
Otherwise known as the People's Small-Scale Mining Act of 1991.
Representative Plaza.
Representative Plaza.
To the Committee on Natural Resources. To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill Number 5785.
House Bill Number 5785.
Ensuring the availability, adequacy, accessibility and safety of food to every Filipino.
Ensuring the availability, adequacy, accessibility and safety of food to every Filipino.
Representative Villar.
Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Special Committee on Food Security. To the Committee on Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill Number 5786.
House Bill Number 5786.
Requiring all national, regional and provincial government hospitals to establish, operate and maintain a dialysis ward or unit in their respective hospital and providing free dialysis treatment to indigest patients.
Requiring all national, regional and provincial government hospitals to establish, operate and maintain a dialysis ward or unit in their respective hospital and providing free dialysis treatment to indigest patients.
Representative Villar.
Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Health. To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5787.
House Bill Number 5787.
Creating a dental unit in every rural health unit under the DOH as part of the primary approach in the delivery of health services.
Creating a dental unit in every rural health unit under the DOH as part of the primary approach in the delivery of health services.
Representative Villar.
Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Health. To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5788.
House Bill Number 5788.
Institutionizing an emergency medical services.
Institutionizing an emergency medical services.
Providing for the establishment, supervision and regulation of emergency medical services profession.
Providing for the establishment, supervision and regulation of emergency medical services profession.
Representative Villar.
Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Health. To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5789.
House Bill Number 5789.
Creating an additional branch of the RTC in the Third District of Zamboanga del Norte to be stationed in the Municipality of Lilo.
Creating an additional branch of the RTC in the Third District of Zamboanga del Norte to be stationed in the Municipality of Lilo.
Representative Amatao.
Representative Amatao.
To the Committee on Justice. To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 5790.
House Bill Number 5790.
Establishing a National High School in Quebal Peña Blanca, Kagayan to be known as the Quebal National High School.
Establishing a national high school in Quebal Peña Blanca, Kagayan to be known as the Quebal National High School.
Representative Lara.
Representative Lara.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5791.
House Bill Number 5791.
Mandating the instruction of World War II in the Philippines in higher education institution.
Mandating the instruction of World War II in the Philippines in higher education institution.
Representative Romolo.
Representative Romolo.
To the Committee on Higher Education, Higher and Technical Education. To the Committee on Higher Education, Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 5792.
House Bill Number 5792. Establishing a student assistance program by banks and government financial institutions.
Establishing a student assistance program by banks and government financial institutions. Representative Romolo.
Representative Romolo.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries. To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill Number 5794.
House Bill Number 5794.
Creating a special economic zone and free port in the city of Iloilo.
Creating a special economic zone and free port in the City of Iloilo.
Creating for the purpose the Metro Iloilo Special Economic Zone and Free Port Authority.
Creating for the purpose the Metro Iloilo Special Economic Zone and Free Port Authority.
Representative Baronda.
Representative Baronda.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry. To the Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill Number 5795.
House Bill Number 5795.
Increasing the age for determining statutory rape and other acts of sexual abuse and exploitation to provide stronger protection for children.
Increasing the age for determining statutory rape and other acts of sexual abuse and exploitation to provide stronger protection for children.
Representative Benitez.
Representative Benitez.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws and the Committee on Welfare of Children. To the Committee on Revision of Laws and the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill Numbers 5796 and 5797.
House Bill Numbers 5796 and 5797.
Renewing extending the franchise granted to AZ Communication Network Incorporated and to International Communications Corporation presently known as Bayan Telecommunications Incorporated.
Renewing extending the franchise granted to AZ Communication Network Incorporated and to International Communications Corporation presently known as Bayan Telecommunications Incorporated.
Representative Rodriguez and Tejada.
Representative Rodriguez and Tejada.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises. To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Resolutions.
Resolutions.
Resolution 596 congratulating Roger Casugay for winning the Philippines first ever gold medal in surfing at the 30th Southeast Asian Games and commending his heroic act in rescuing Indonesian surfer Arif Nurhad Yat in the middle of their one-on-one race during the semifinals.
Resolution 596 congratulating Roger Casugay for winning the Philippines first ever gold medal in surfing at the 30th Southeast Asian Games and commending his heroic act in rescuing Indonesian surfer Arif Nurhad Yat in the middle of their one-on-one race during the semifinals.
Representative C. Alvarado.
Representative C. Alvarado.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development. To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 597 directing the Metro Manila Development Authority to revive the organized bus route system in Metro Manila to at least its operational status of 2009.
House Resolution 597 directing the Metro Manila Development Authority to revive the organized bus route system in Metro Manila to at least its operational status of 2009.
Representative Fernando.
Representative Fernando.
To the Committee on Metro Manila Development. To the Committee on Metro Manila Development.
House Resolution 598 urging the House to the Committees on Human Rights and the Visayas Development to investigate the reported bombing and militarization of Las Navas, Northern Sumo and other areas and provinces in Eastern Visayas aggravating the economic difficulties of the people.
House Resolution 598 urging the House to the Committees on Human Rights and the Visayas Development to investigate the reported bombing and militarization of Las Navas, Northern Sumo and other areas and provinces in Eastern Visayas aggravating the economic difficulties of the people.
Representative Gaite, Zarate, Culyamat, Castro Franz, Brosas and Ilago.
Representative Gaite, Zarate, Culyamat, Castro Franz, Brosas and Ilago.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 599 declaring January 16 as National Baptist Day.
House Resolution 599 declaring January 16 as National Baptist Day.
Representative Abante.
Representative Abante.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws. To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Resolution 600 expressing the warm and profound congratulations of the House to Speaker Alan Pedro Caetano, Representative Bambol Tolentino and the rest of the organizers and the participants of the 30th Southeast Asian Games for a successful hosting by our country of this significant international event and the extraordinary performance of all Philippine athletes.
House Resolution 600 expressing the warm and profound congratulations of the House to Speaker Alan Pedro Caetano, Representative Bambol Tolentino and the rest of the organizers and the participants of the 30th Southeast Asian Games for a successful hosting by our country of this significant international event and the extraordinary performance of all Philippine athletes.
Representative Go Mark.
Representative Go Mark.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 601 congratulating and commending the Filipino surfer Roger Casugay for exhibiting heroism during the 2019 Southeast Asian Games and for winning the gold medal in the men's longboard competition in San Juan La Unión.
House Resolution 601 congratulating and commending the Filipino surfer Roger Casugay for exhibiting heroism during the 2019 Southeast Asian Games and for winning the gold medal in the men's longboard competition in San Juan La Unión.
Representative Farina Sria.
Representative Farina Sria.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development. To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Joint Resolution 26 and 27.
House Joint Resolution 26 and 27.
Creating a Congressional Oversight Committee on Education to review and assess Philippine education.
Creating a Congressional Oversight Committee on Education to review and assess Philippine education.
Representative Angara Benitez Kimbo Negrales Juan.
Representative Angara Benitez Kimbo Negrales Juan.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
Message from the President.
Message from the President.
Message dated December 13, 2019 informing the House the necessity of immediate enactment of Senate Bill Number 1219.
Message dated December 13, 2019 informing the House the necessity of immediate enactment of Senate Bill Number 1219.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
Message from the Senate.
Message from the Senate.
Message dated December 11, 2019 informing the House that on even date, the Senate adopted House Concurrent Resolution Number 5.
Message dated December 11, 2019 informing the House that on even date, the Senate adopted House Concurrent Resolution Number 5.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs. To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
Message dated December 11, 2019 informing the House that on even date, the Senate approved the Conference Committee Report on the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Votes on HB Number 4228.
Message dated December 11, 2019 informing the House that on even date, the Senate approved the Conference Committee Report on the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Votes on HB Number 4228.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
Communications Letters dated 2 and 6 December 2019 of Janes G. I. Gonzalez, Deputy Director, Office of the General Counsel of Legal Services, BSP furnishing the House with duly certified and authenticated BSP issuances.
Communications Letters dated 2 and 6 December 2019 of Janes G. I. Gonzalez, Deputy Director, Office of the General Counsel of Legal Services, BSP furnishing the House with duly certified and authenticated BSP issuances.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries. To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Committee Reports.
Committee Reports.
Reports Number 138 and 139 of the Committee on Public Works and Highways on House Bill Numbers 5811 and 624.
Reports Number 138 and 139 of the Committee on Public Works and Highways on House Bill Numbers 5811 and 624.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 140 of the Committee on Basic Education and Culture on House Bill Number 5829.
Report Number 140 of the Committee on Basic Education and Culture on House Bill Number 5829.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 141 of the Committee on Public Works and Highways and Appropriations on House Bill Number 5831.
Report Number 141 of the Committee on Public Works and Highways and Appropriations on House Bill Number 5831.
To the Committee on Rules. To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker. The majority would like to nominate and elect the following members to the different committees. To the Committee on Foreign Affairs. As Vice Chairperson, we have the Honorable Francisco Dattol and the Honorable Roni Ong. To the Committee on Games and Amusement. As member, the Honorable Romel Angara and the Honorable Francisco Dattol. To the Committee on Local Government. As Vice Chairperson, the Honorable Francisco Dattol. For the Committee on Metro Manila Development as Vice Chairperson, the Honorable Francisco Dattol. To the Committee on National Defense and Security as Vice Chairperson, the Honorable Francisco Dattol. To the Committee on Public Works and Highways as Vice Chairperson, the Honorable Francisco Dattol. To the Committee on Senior Citizens. As Chairperson, the Honorable Francisco Dattol. As Vice Chairperson, the Honorable Marilo Orojo. Honorable Antonio Calixto and the Honorable El Pige barzaga. As member, the Honorable Junicua, Honorable Nestor Fong Wan, the Honorable Fred Vargas, the Honorable Eric Martinez, the Honorable Sherlyn Banyas, the Honorable Abdullah Di Maporo, the Honorable Carlito Marquez, the Honorable Rita Robes, the Honorable Lorna Silverio, the Honorable Fernando Cabredo, the Honorable BJ Biron, the Honorable Ed Gulyas, the Honorable Roncalo, Honorable McNell Lusotan and the Honorable Domingo Rivera. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. All those mentioned to the different committees is now approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session suspended.
...................................................
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of our dear colleague Congressman June Datol, headed by the sister of none other than our dear President, President Rodrigo Roa Duterte and Miss Eleanor Duterte from Davao City. The National President of the Senior Citizen. Together with her are Coalition of Association for Senior Citizens of the Philippines, Vice President Attorney Efren Santos, Corporate Secretary General Mr. Rogelio Galman, Business Manager Jaime Cruz, Corporate Finance Officer Mrs. Erlinda Baniega, Auditor Mr. Marcelo Landicho, From Liga ng mga Oskar Heads ng Pilipinas, Vice President Mr. Rodrigo Cinco from Tacloban City, Secretary General Mrs. Nonita Redd from Owas Albay, Mrs. Asusena Bajau from Davao City, And Pastor Luis Moran from Indanao, Oskar Head from Quezon City Attorney Bayani Hipol, Oskar Head of Navaliches District Center Mrs. Norma Datol, Together with Oskar Quezon City Secretary General Lilia de la Cruz, Oskar Head of Makati Jose Mari Sivo, Mrs. Joy Gabiola, Mr. Emmanuel Villafuerte, Mrs. Tita Baudz, And the 5th District Quezon City Representatives, Headed by Mrs. Virgi Bernalis and Wilma Ordones. So move, Madam Speaker.
The guests of Representative Datol, please stand up. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I also move that we recognize the guests of Congresswoman Franz Castro of the party list representative ACT Teachers. They are ACT Philippines Raymond Basilio, Alex Legaspi, Jocelyn Martinez, Patricia Mulley, Ronald Artiaga, Benito Sayon, Emerald Laskano, Delia Hernandez, ACT NCR Union Division of Pasig City Chapter Jennifer Andraneda and Arnold Andraneda. So move, Madam Speaker.
The guests of Representative Franz Castro of ACT Party List, please stand up. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, yesterday we have approved on 3rd reading House Bill Number 5509. And with that, Madam Speaker, I request that the Secretary General be directed to immediately transmit the House Bill 5509 as earlier approved, or as yesterday been approved on 3rd reading. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection that Chair here is not, the Secretary General is directed to transmit such approval? Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the approval on 3rd reading various local bills. And with that, I move that we consider House Bill Number 5666, 5614, 5615, 5616, 5617, 5618, 5657, 5658, 5659, 5660, 5661, 5662, 5663, 5664, 5665, 5668, 5667. And may I request, Madam Speaker, that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measures. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection that Secretary General is directed to read House Bills numbers that are mentioned?
House Bill Number 5666, An ACT creating 4 additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 8th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Tacloban, Province of Leyte and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14I of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended. House Bill Number 5614, An ACT creating 1 additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the 10th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Venezuela, Province of Misamis Oriental, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14K of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended. House Bill Number 5615, An ACT creating 1 additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the 4th Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Alfonso, Province of Cavite, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14C of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended. House Bill Number 5616, An ACT creating 4 additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the city, uh, in the 4th Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Kaluwag, Province of Quezon, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the second, for the purpose Section 14C of Batas Bilang Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5617, An ACT creating 1 additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the 8th Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Willyaba, Province of Leyte, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14I of Batas Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5618, An ACT creating 3 additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 4th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Calamba, Province of Laguna, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14C of Batas Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5657, An ACT creating 3 additional branches of the Metropolitan Trial Court in the National Capital Region to be stationed in the city of Paranyake and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 27 of Batas Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5658, An ACT creating 4 additional branches of the Regional Trial Court and 2 additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in cities in the 8th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Ormo, Province of Leyte, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purposes Section 14I and 29 of Batas Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5659, An ACT creating 10 additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 11th Judicial Region and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14L of Batas Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5660, An ACT creating 1 additional branch of the Regional Trial Court and 1 additional branch of the Metropolitan Trial Court in the National Capital Region to be stationed in Navaliches, Quezon City, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purposes Section 14D and 27 of Batas Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5661, An ACT creating 5 additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the National Capital Region to be stationed in the city of Montinlupa and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14D of Batas Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5662, An ACT creating 3 additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 4th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of General Trias, Province of Cavite, and appropriating funds therefore, amending Section 14E of Batas Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5663, An ACT creating 3 additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 9th Judicial Region in the city of Tapitan, Province of Zabwangadil Norte, appropriating funds there more, amending for the purpose Section 14J of Batas Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5664, An ACT creating 3 additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 4th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Cataduna, Province of Quezon, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14E of Batas Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5665, Creating 2 additional branches of the Regional Trial Court and 2 additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in cities in the 11th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Mati, Province of Davao Oriental, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purposes Section 14L and 29 of Batas Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5668, An ACT creating 1 additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the 10th Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Quezon, Province of Pukidnon, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14K of Batas Pambansabilang 129. House Bill Number 5667, An ACT creating 2 additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in cities to be stationed in the city of Bacolod and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 1420 and 29 of Batas Pambansabilang 129.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on 3rd reading the respective House Bills and request the Secretary General be directed to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair is done, the Secretary General is directed to call the roll for nominal voting.
Roll call of members in consideration of the aforementioned bills. Avante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abo, Abuek Saldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincola, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Albaras Franz, Albaras Hinaro, Albaras Pantalion, Amantimatba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atchenza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagaching, Balindong, Banias Noctales, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascog, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Yazon, Biliones, Pirón, Volilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Rosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabochan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campus, Canama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Predenil, Kaitano Alan Peter Compañero, Kaitanong Maria La Arne, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsungalao, Co Angelica, Co Elsalde, Co Juanco, Gulyantes, Crissologo, Cuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Gulyamat, Dagoo, Dalipe, Talo, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, Defender Lawrence, Defender Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Losa Montalia, De Maporo Abdullah, De Maporo Muhammad Khalid, Duabit, Du Hali, Duterte, Di Postino Ino, Di Postino Michael, Di Ayantol, Epcas, Ecleyo, Ilago, Inverga, Irise, Irigel, Hermita Buahin, Isco Dero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Parinyas Ria Cristina, Parinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandes, Fernando, Perer Juliet Marie, Perer Luis, Flores, Punguan, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Villa, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo Chan, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatsalian, Gato, Heron, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Goroseta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Areesco, Ataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alos Jos, Javier, Emenes, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Congun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagun, Lara, Lasatim, Lietson, Ligarda, Lim, Limkaitong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangodadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez. Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwanyu Dison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirez Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Román, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romolo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Sauluk, Savelliano, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Singson Mejan, Singsuat, Suansing Estrelleta, Suansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Sunthay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talliado, Tanbunting, Tanalisa Sina, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sharian, Tan Tambut Sherney, Pi Hada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiyanko, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Jutor, Di Alan, Di Diego, Umalí Alfonso, Umalí María Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilasco, Viloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villia Nueva Eduardo, Villia Nueva Noel, Villar, Villarasa Suárez, Villarica, Viulago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikorat, Zarate Zubiri.
With one-seventy-one voting in the affirmative, negative, zero abstentions, house bills numbers five-six-six-six, five-six-one-four, five-six-one-five, five-six-one-six, five-six-one-seven, five-six-one-eight, five-six-five-seven, five-six-five-eight, five-six-five-nine, five-six-six-zero, five-six-six-one, five-six-six-two, five-six-six-three, five-six-six-four, five-six-six-five, five-six-six-eight, five-six-six-seven is now approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, in line with that, I move that we take up house bills pertaining to testa training and assessment centers and with that I would like to move that we consider house bill number five-five-seven-nine and five-five-eight-zero and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measures.
The Secretary General is directed to read house bills five-five-seven-nine and five-five-eight-zero.
House bill number five-five-seven-nine and act establishing technical education and skills development authority, training and assessment center in the municipalities of Magdiwang in Cebu Island, in Odiogan in Tablas Island province of Bromblon and appropriating funds therefore. House bill number five-five-eight-zero and act establishing a technical education and skills development authority, training and assessment center in Barangay, Kamanan, Kagayan de Oro to be known as the Kagayan de Oro, city testa training and assessment center and appropriating funds therefore.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading house bill number five-five-seven-nine and five-five-eight-zero and request the Secretary General be directed to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to call the nominal, the call, the roll for nominal voting for house bills five-five-seven-nine and five-five-eight-zero.
Roll call of members in consideration of the aforementioned house bills. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abuegsaldivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Hinaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantimatba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Masco, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Yason, Biliones, Pirón, Bolilia, Bondok, Ordado, Bravo, Rosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabochan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayetano Alan Peter, Kayetano Maria La Arne, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsungalau, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizalde, Ko Juango, Gulyantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Gulyamat, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Losa Montalia, De Maporo Abdullah, De Maporo Muhammad Khalid, Duabit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino, Di Faustino Michael III, Di Ian Paul, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Parinyas Ria, Parinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez Fernando, Ferjuliet, Ferj Luis, Flores, Funguan, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatsalian, Gato, Heron, Go Ed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Goroseta, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Areesco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Lietchon, Ligarda, Lim, Limkaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwanyu Dison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirez Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Román, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romolo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Sauluk, Savelliano, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Singson Mejan, Singsuat, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Sunthay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talliado, Tanbunting, Tanalisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Sharir, Tan Sharie, Tan Tambut, Pi Hada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiyanko, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Jutor, Di Alan, Di Diego, Umalí Alfonso, Umalí María Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valmayor, Valeriano, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Verga, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villia Nueva Brother Eddie, Villia Nueva Noel, Villar, Villarasa Suárez, Villarica, Viulago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikorat, Zarate Zubiri.
With one-hundred-and-seventy-seven voting in affirmative, next zero negative, zero abstentions, house bills number five-five-seven-nine and house bill five-five-seven-eight is now approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up house bill number two-five-eight-two, one-seven-nine-nine, eight-three-one and house bill number two-four-four-four.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measures. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read house bills number two-five-eight-two, two-five, one-seven-eight, one-seven-nine-nine, eight-three-one and two-four-four-four.
House bill number two-five-eight-two and act increasing the bed capacity of the lying-in clinic in the municipality of Rizal province of Palawa from ten beds to twenty beds, upgrading its service facilities and professional healthcare services, authorizing the increase of its medical personnel and appropriating funds therefore. House bill number one-seven-nine-nine and act renaming the Talisay District Hospital in Talisay City province of Cebu South Medical Center and appropriating funds therefore amending for the purpose Republic Act number seven-seven-nine nine entitled an act establishing a district hospital in the municipality of Talisay province of Cebu to be known as the Talisay District Hospital and appropriating funds therefore. House bill number eight-three-one and act increasing bed capacity of the Beol Medical Center in Naga City province of Cameney Sur from five-hundred beds to one-thousand beds, upgrading its service facilities and professional healthcare services, authorizing the increase of its medical workforce complement, amending for the purpose Republic Act number eight-zero-five-three and appropriating funds therefore. House bill number two-four-four-four and act providing for the establishment of a women's, women's and children's hospital in the municipality of Pamplona in the province of Cameney Sur to be known as the Beol Women's and Children's Hospital and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader. Majority Leader, I'd just like to make a correction on the last two bills that we'd mentioned. House bills five-five-seven-nine and five-five-eight-zero are the ones approved on third and final reading.
Third and final reading. My apologies, Madam Speaker.
Yes, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading house bill number two-five-eight-two, one-seven-nine-nine, eight-three-one, two-four-four-four and request the Secretary General be directed to read the names of to call the rolls for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is redirected to call the roll for nominal voting.
Roll call of members. Honorable representatives, Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abuegsaldivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Hinaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantimatba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Masco, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Yason, Biliones, Pirón, Bolilia, Bondok, Ordado, Bravo, Rosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabochan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayetano Alan Peter Compañero, Kayetano Maria La Arne, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsungalau, Ko Angelika, Ko Elizalde, Ko Juango, Gulyantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Gulyamat, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Losa Montalia, De Maporo Abdullah, De Maporo Muhammad Khalid, Duabit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael III, Di Ian Paul, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Parinyas Ria, Parinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez Fernando, Ferjuliet, Ferj Luis, Flores, Funguan, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatsalian, Gato, Heron, Go Ed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Goroseta, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Areesco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Lietchon, Ligarda, Lim, Limkaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose...
Huaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwana Dison, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Roelio, Padgiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramires Sato, Ramos, Rimulia, Rivilla, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Román Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaría, Sacaluran, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Frekto, Sarmento, Saulug, Savillano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mian, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Tambut, Tejada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tiyango Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tijor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villarasa Suárez, Villarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikorat, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred eighty-two voting in the affirmative, zero negative, zero abstentions, House Bills numbers two-five-eight-two, one-seven-nine-nine, eight-three-one, and two-four-four-four are approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up, consider House Bill number five-six-four-three and five-six-four-four on the establishment of cultural heritage zones. And with that, I move that we direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measures. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Bills number five-six-four-three and five-six-four-four.
House Bill five-six-four-three, an act declaring the Cagayan de Oro River in its immediate environs, located in Cagayan de Oro City, province of Visamis Oriental, a cultural heritage zone. House Bill five-six-four-four, an act declaring the city of Carcar in the province of Cebu, a cultural heritage zone.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill number five-six-four-three and five-six-four-four, and request the Secretary General be directed to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to call the roll for nominal voting for House Bills five-six-eight-two and five-six... I'm sorry, five-six-four-three and five-six-four-four.
Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill five-six-four-three and five-six-four-four. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abu Exaldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Albario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsensa, Amentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Berzaga, Bascuk, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Viason, Biliones, Pirón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabuchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayatanu Alan Peter Compañero, Kayatanu María La Arne, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizalde, Co Juanco, Co Leantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Coliamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, Delos Santos, Delos Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Duhalii, DoTerte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian Paul, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria Cristina, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernández Fernando, Ferr Juliet, Ferr Luis, Flores, Fong Wan, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, García Jose Enrique, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalyan, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Neptali, Gonzales Carlo, Goroseta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lietchon, Ligarda, Lim, Limcaichong, López, Loyola, Losotan, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magadudato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernández, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad Nagaño, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerco, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Huaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwana...
With one hundred eighty-nine voting in the affirmative, zero negative, zero abstentions, House Bills number five-six-four-three and five-six-four-four is now approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill number five-six-eight-two and five-six-nine-two pertaining to the declarations of holidays. And with that, I move that we... Request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measures. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Bills number five-six-eight-two and five-six-nine-two.
House Bill number five-six-eight-two, an act declaring June twenty-one of every year a special non-working holiday in Tagaytay City, province of Cavite, in commemoration of its founding day to be known as Charter Day of Tagaytay City, or Araw ng Lunsod ng Tagaytay, amending for the purpose RA Number one-zero-seven-seven-five. House Bill number five-six-nine-two, an act declaring June fifteen of every year a special non-working holiday in the province of Pampanga to be known as the Mount Pinatubo Memorial Day.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill number five-six-eight-two and five-six-nine-two, and request that the Secretary General be directed to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is to call the roll for nominal voting for House Bills five-six-eight-two and five-six-nine-two.
Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number five-six-eight-two and five-six-nine-two. Honorable members, Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abu Exaldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Albario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsensa, Amentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Berzaga, Bascuk, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Viason, Biliones, Pirón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabuchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayatanu Alan Peter Compañero, Kayatanu María La Arne, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizalde, Co Juanco, Co Leantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Coliamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, Delos Santos, Delos Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Duhalii, DoTerte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael III, Di Ian Paul, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernández Fernando, Ferr Juliet, Ferr Luis, Flores, Fong Wan, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, García, Jose Enrique, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalyan, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Neptali, Gonzales Carlo, Goroseta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lietchon, Ligarda, Lim, Limcaichong, López, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernández, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad Nagaño, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerco, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Huaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwana Dison, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Roelio, Padgiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramires Sato, Ramos, Rimulia, Rivilla, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Román Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaría, Sacaluran, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Frekto, Sarmento, Saulug, Savillano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mian, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Tambut, Tejada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tijor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villarasa Suárez, Villarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikorat, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred ninety-four voting in the affirmative, zero negative, zero abstentions, House Bills number five-six-eight-two and five-six-nine-two is now approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill number five-six-nine-seven and five-six-nine-eight on establishment of a state university and renaming of a state university, and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measures. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read House Bills five-six-nine-seven and five-six-nine-eight.
House Bill number five-six-nine-seven, an act appropriating funds for the establishment of the Becol University, East Campus Physical Development Plan and the construction of its school facilities inside the BU East Campus. House Bill number five-six-nine-eight, an act renaming the Mariano Marcos State University in the city of Batac, Ilocos Norte, as the Ferdinand E Marcos State University, amending for the purpose Presidential Decree Number one-two-seven-nine entitled "Merging" the Mariano Marcos Memorial College and Science of Technology and the Northern Luzon State College into a state university to be known as the MMSU, transferring the college-level courses of Ilocos Norte Agricultural College and Ilocos Norte College of Arts and Trades into said university, providing a charter for the purpose and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on third reading House Bill number five-six-nine-seven and five-six-nine-eight, and request the Secretary General be directed to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Secretary General is directed to call the roll for nominal voting of House Bills number five-six-nine-seven and five-six-nine-eight.
Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number five-six-nine-seven and five-six-nine-eight. Honorable representatives, Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abu Exaldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Albario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsensa, Amentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Berzaga, Bascuk, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Viason, Biliones, Pirón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabuchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayatanu Alan Peter Compañero, Kayatanu María La Arne, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizalde, Co Juanco, Co Leantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Coliamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, Delos Santos, Delos Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Duhalii, DoTerte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael III, Di Ian Paul, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernández Fernando, Ferr Juliet, Ferr Luis, Flores, Fong Wan, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, García Jose Enrique, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalyan, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Neptali, Gonzales Carlo, Goroseta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández Herrera Di, Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lietchon, Ligarda, Lim, Limcaichong, López, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernández, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad Nagaño, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerco, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Huaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwana Dison, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Roelio, Padgiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramires Sato, Ramos, Rimulia, Rivilla, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Román Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaría, Sacaluran, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Frekto, Sarmento, Saulug, Savillano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mian, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Tambut, Tejada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Tijor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Uy Juliet,[1754.16] Ti Diego, Umani Alfonso, Umani María Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villara Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykorat, Zarate Zubiri.
With one hundred ninety-four members voting in the affirmative, none for negative, none for abstention, House Bill Number 5697 and 5698 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that the Secretary General be directed, that the bills will be immediately transmitted to Senate, the previous bills that we have recently approved on third reading. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may we please greet the guest of Honorable Congressman Wes Gachalian. The following guests are the candidates of Turisma Filipina with Miss Sheri Lu Pablito of Quezon City and Miss Hannah Nogara of Venezuela City.
To the guest of representative Wes Gachalian, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we elect as members of the House contingent to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on House Bill Number 1026 and Senate Bill Number 1074 as member in the House panel, as chairperson, the Honorable Joey Salceda, the vice-chairpersons, the Honorable Sharon Garin, the Honorable Estrida Swan Sing, the Honorable Alaisa Shinatan, the Honorable Eric Go Yap, and for the majority, we have the Honorable El Rey Villoferta, our Deputy Speaker, the Honorable Michael John Duavit, the Deputy Speaker, Gegracias Divis Avillano, Deputy Speaker, Ranio Abu, and for the minority, the Honorable Alex Advincola. So move, Mister Speaker.
There any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Session is resumed.
Mister Speaker, we are in receipt of a certification dated December seventeen, two thousand nineteen, from the Special Provisional Provincial Board of Canvassers for Southern Lete, proclaiming Mister Roger G. Mercado as the winning candidate for the position of member of House of Representatives in the Lone Legislative District of Southern Lete. Mister Speaker, pursuant to the aforementioned certification, I move that we allow the Honorable Roger G. Mercado of the Lone District of Southern Lete to take his oath.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to call Representative Roger G. Mercado of the Lone District of Southern Lete to take his oath of office before this body.
We invite Representative Roger Mercado to join the Speaker at the Ross Room and take his oath of office. We also invite the family members to join Representative Mercado.
May I request all members of the House of Representatives and all of our guests in the galleries to please rise to witness the oath-taking of our new, uh, member and to welcome Congressman Oging Roger Mercado.
I, Roger Gaviola Mercado, oath of Maasin City, Province of Southern Lete. Having been elected as, having been elected as representative, Lone District of Southern Lete. Hereby solemnly swear, hereby solemnly swear, that I will well and faithfully, that I will well and faithfully, discharge to the best of my ability, discharge to the best of my ability, the duties of my present position, the duties of my present position, and of all others, and of all others, I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines. I may hereafter hold under the Republic of the Philippines. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. And that I will obey the laws, and that I will obey the laws, legal orders, legal orders, and decrees, and decrees, promulgated by the duly constituted authorities, promulgated by the duly constituted authorities, of the Republic of the Philippines. of the Republic of the Philippines. And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily, and that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily, without mental reservation, without mental reservation, or purpose of evasion. or purpose of evasion. So help me God. So help me God.
Welcome back Congressman. Session is suspended. Session resumed.
Mister Speaker, with leave of the House, I move that we open the privilege hour.
There no objection, Chair says none, motion is approved.
Madam, Mister Speaker, the first to avail of the privilege hour is the Minority Leader, the Honorable Bienvenido Abante of the Sixth District of Manila. I move that he will be recognized. So move Mister Speaker.
Honorable Bienvenido Abante is recognized.
Mister Speaker, thank you, and good afternoon to all of my colleagues in the House. Magandang hapon po. Tanyo lahat. I stand here today not as minority leader, but as a proud member of the Eighteenth Congress. I stand here today proud like a father whose children accomplish something meaningful in their life. Proud of what our athletes have accomplished in the name of our country. Proud for our nation. I stand here as a proud Filipino. The Bible says, "Whatsoever thy hands find it to do, do it with thy might." We saw this happen, Mister Speaker, and my dear colleague. Kaya natin. The Philippines amassed an unprecedented tally of one hundred forty-nine gold medals, one hundred seventeen silver medals, and one hundred twenty-one bronze medals. All in all, a total of three hundred eighty-seven medals that made the Philippines the overall champion of the Twenty-Nineteen Thirtieth Sea Games. A far cry from two thousand and five, when we last host this event, where we, we already outdone ourselves when we tallied two hundred ninety-one medals, one hundred thirteen of which were gold medals. A feat, second to none. A triumph of human will and the enduring spirit of Filipino athletes. To you, our heartfelt congratulations and the gratitude of a proud nation. You deserve a round of applause from this august chamber to our athletes. We are proud of you, very proud of you. Kaya natin ito. Itupuan sinasabi. Just when I thought that we could not do any better, the Twenty-Nineteen Thirtieth Sea Games featured a new category, esports. This is an inaugural staging of esports in the penile event composed of six events divided into three categories, namely PC, console, and mobile. Where a twenty-seven Filipino contingent battled and won three gold medals, one silver, and one bronze. And they deserve, Mister Speaker, to be mentioned today. We have Caviar N. Acampado, Starcraft II, PC, gold medal. We have Briale Albizos, James Guerra, Marvin Ruston, Van Jerico Mandalaisai, John Anthony Vargas, DOTA II, PC, gold medal. Angelo Archangel, Alan Castro Major Jr., Genil Bata Anon, Kenneth J. Villia, and Carlito Rivo, Mobile Legend, Bang Bang Gold Medal. This is proof that Filipinos can hold their own in computer technology. I truly believe that we have a future here. We can compete with the rest of the world, whether on esports platform, information technology, or whatever technology the world has to offer. If we can harness these talents like how Team Sibyl did, our future in this area is limitless. To Team Sibyl, the national squad in esports bankrolled by SMART and your twenty-seven Filipino national squad in esports, contingent. Right now, you are one of the best and brightest Filipinos in this sector. Thank you. Use it well and expand your horizon for the Filipino people. Congratulations. Kahit anong sabihin nila, kaya natin. Naysayers, Filipinos who think nothing but negative thoughts and full-time critics could not say a word when the Twenty-Nineteen Thirtieth Sea Games unfolded in the opening ceremony at the Philippine Arena. It was truly a grand show. Filipino athletes were celebrated in a most grandiose manner, befitting their stature in Philippine sports annals. In one of the most dramatic scenes of the opening ceremony, legends like Efren Bata Reyes, Paeng Libomoceno, Ligya De Vega, Eric Buahin, the good husband of one of our Congresswoman here, Akiko Thompson, Onyok Vilasco, Bonku, Alvin Patrimony, carried the Southeast Asian Games Federation flag. I cannot help but think that this is what the Twenty-Nineteen Thirtieth Sea Games is all about. Athletes, Filipinos, nothing else. And no less than the parade of Filipino athletes highlighted this as the Filipinos present and the entire Philippine Archipelago in a moment of unity revealed in applause. To our Philippine Sea Games Organizational Committee, or FISCOC, headed by our very own Speaker, Representative Alan Peter Compañero Escaytano, Chairman of FISCOC, Honorable Abraham Bambo Entolintino, Philippine Olympics Committee Chairman, and William I. Ramirez, the Philippine Sports Commission Chairman, and the rest of the staff and thousands of volunteers, our utmost appreciation and gratitude. They have proven that the Philippines can be the best at what we set our minds to. We Jay Shong, the Vice President of the Olympic Council of Asia, praised the Philippines for its organization of the Twenty-Nineteen Sea Games. He said in a press conference on Monday, he believes the Philippines can host a bigger scale event after seeing how the ongoing Sea Games in the country is running. Let us give the Speaker and the FISCOC people a round of applause. We are proud of you. Kaya natin talaga ito. We win as one. This is the Sea Games Twenty-Nineteen theme, with Clark serving as the main hub of the Thirtieth Sea Games in Twenty-Nineteen. The Philippines witnessed the construction of a world-class sports facilities in the new Clark City Sports Village, including the Aquatic Center and the Athletic Stadium that hosted fifty-six sports to be played by nearly ten thousand athletes from eleven countries, namely, our country, the Philippines, Brunei, Darussalam, Cambodia, Indonesia, Laos, Malaysia, Myanmar, Singapore, Thailand, Timor-Leste, and Vietnam. This is a feat by itself. Indeed, we win as one. And we are ready for more, Mister Speaker. This is a signal to the whole world that the Philippines is open for business and we can take care of what the world wants from us, not only in the realm of sports, but as well as other international endeavors. Kaya-kaya ekangga. Not only did we deliver an overall championship to the Philippines, several Filipino athletes outdid themselves, Mister Speaker. I would like to name a few. Christina Not clocked twenty-three point one seconds en route to the women's two-hundred-meter dash gold, shattering her own record of twenty-two point zero seven in the preliminaries to set a new Sea Games and Philippine mark. She broke the record two times. What a woman! And what a Filipina! The Philippine Obstacle Run Contention accomplished to be a Filipino because all of you who have participated and brought honor to our country. And I hope that this will not be the last. To this Filipino athlete, I wish you well and congratulations for a job well done. We are proud of you. Kaya natin ito, diba? With all the medals that we have won, the praise of the country for hosting at an international level world-class facilities, Mister Speaker, Filipino surfer Roger Kasugai stands above the rest in a selfless, heroic act and without regard for himself. Filipino surfer Roger Kasugai rescued Indonesian rival Arif Norhidyat who got swept away and pounded by triple overhead bomb waves after his surfboard least broke in the middle of a third round of the Surfing Men's Longboard Competition on Friday, December sixth, twenty nineteen. Filipino surfer Roger Kasugai is Filipino worth aspiring for, Mister Speaker, my dear colleagues? He is worth emulating. He deserves our praise and gratitude of the nation. He embodies what we hope for and what we want to be as a Filipino. You make us proud. To borrow a line from a very popular movie, Roger Kasugai showed outstanding moral fiber. He knew how to do good more than the gold. Kaya natin, kahit mahirap na. Now, as the athletes of these eleven countries return to their countries, champions and the likes, with the Philippines as overall champion, we should be reminded of the valuable lessons these athletes have given us as public officials of this land. Through sports, they have demonstrated the will and resolve to finish what they have started. To the pains and discomfort of physical activities, they have demonstrated that everything can be done and can be done with excellence. Through sports, there can be peace and unity, not only in the Philippines but throughout the Southeast Asian countries. In times of violence, strife, and killing, I have to admit, Mister Speaker, I am tired of violence. I am tired of strives and killings and thank God for our Filipino athletes. To this sport, Mister Speaker, they have united the Philippines and have momentarily stopped bickering and criticism and for a few days, problems besetting our nation were set aside to rally our country in every sports we have competed. My only hope is that we, as government officials, can be what our athletes have accomplished in such a short time. That we could be faster, higher, stronger, and gooder, if there is such a word. In the face of criticism, as government official, we should be higher, climb higher, and fly higher. We take the road less traveled and reflect on what the criticism is and do what we can for a better Philippines, Mister Speaker. In the face of overwhelming odds, we should be faster to provide services to the nation. It is a duty that we owe our nation. A service that takes longer than expected is equivalent to injustice. In pursuit of the truth, we should be stronger as government official and never waver in seeking and finding it. Kaya natin at sana nasatama tayong lahat. As our athletes rest and the nation, and the eleven nations marvel at the closing of the Thirtieth Sea Games, we have a solemn oath to do our jobs and find the truth. This representation therefore, This representation, therefore, welcome any investigations regarding allegations of graft and corruption in the conduct of the 30th SEA Games hosted by the Philippines. For the critics and naysayers alike, this representation urge you to come forward and provide the necessary proof if there is any. Indeed, any graft and corruption in the hosting of the 30th SEA Games by the Philippines, we owe the truth to the Filipino people on what really happened to the following. The allegations, Mr. Speaker, and to all of you, my colleagues, will be answered perhaps in the most laudable manner by the officials of SEA Games. Like, for example, the FISCOC 1.5 billion in funds that did not allegedly undergo public bidding. Alex displacement of indigenous communities from their ancestral lands in the construction of the Aquatic Center Stadium and athletes' villages in New Clark City. Unfinished structures at the start of the ceremonies. A fifty-million peso cauldron used for the ceremonial lighting of the SEA Games, considered by some as extravagant. Unfunded sports equipment and training of Filipino athletes. They must be prepared to present evidence on the same. As the ombudsman stated in the creation of a seven-man fact-finding panel to investigate the possible corruption in the recently concluded 30th SEA Games, there should be no sacred cow in the government. Let the hammer fall wherever that may be. Let this be clear. This representation wants to find the truth to these allegations as we don't want this to be a mark on a very prestigious and successful event that the Philippines just hosted. If not for anything else, we owe the Filipino nation the truth. As I attended the closing of the 2019 30th SEA Games, I cannot help but think of ways to extend our run. This is a dream that came true and I hope, together with my colleagues, we will help them further down the road to keep this dream alive. For the Filipino athletes, for the nation, our athletes deserve our utmost and unwavering support. Let Congress give them the funds that they need so that we may produce world-class athletes that we, as a nation, can be proud of. Mabuhay ang atletang Filipino. Mabuhay ang Filipinas. Maraming salamat po sa pagkataguyod ng karangalan ng bansang Filipinas. Thank you very much.
Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, next to be recognized to deliver his privileged speech, um, we move that we recognize Congressman June Dato from the Senior Citizen.
Can you refer it to the committee room?
So...
Please refer it to the committee rules, the privileged...
We move that we refer the privileged speech of the good minority floor leader to the proper committee. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Congressman June Dato from the Senior Citizen Party list to deliver his privileged speech.
Honorable June Dato is recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, Honorable Alan Peter Caitano, Majority Floor Leader, Honorable Martin Romualdes, Minority Floor Leader, Honorable Benny Abante, Deputy Speakers, my colleagues, ladies and gentlemen of this august body. Good afternoon. I stand before you to give my appreciation and gratitude to all the persons who helped me in one way or another in quest for truth before the Commission on Election. Special mention is accorded to Speaker Alan Peter Caitano, Majority Floor Leader Martin Romualdes, and my solid party list coalition congressman and all deputy speakers. Without these persons, I would not be with you today. Thank you very much. I should have been proclaimed after the May thirteen, twenty nineteen national elections. It had been at been for a couple of people who are considered an ambitious pseudo-politician. They have robbed me of my about five months of legislative services to our dear senior citizens. Actually, this was not my personal loss, but these politicians have unresonably, unjustifiably, and apathetically deprived our senior citizens of this country their much-needed legislative reforms and basic services within this region. Thanks to the Commission on Election for proclaiming me finally, I have been vindicated. You may want me to remember our National Commission of Senior Citizens or Republica number eleven three-five-zero, which was signed by our president Rodrigo Roa Duterte on July twenty-five, twenty nineteen. This law ensures that the rights and welfare of senior citizens in the Philippines are protected. The Commission is tasked with ensuring the full implementation of laws, policies, and programs of the government pertaining to senior citizens. It is also supposed to make policies that will promote and protect the rights of senior citizens. The law also transfers function, activities, and programs of the Department of Social Welfare and Dubelment for the Poor, Born Near or Near and Disadvantaged Senior Citizens to the National Senior Citizen Commission. But we should not stop here because of under section thirteen, implementation rules and regulations. The Commission, after due consultation with the BM, DSWD, DILG, League of Citizens of the Philippines, League of Municipalities of the Philippines, and other stakeholders shall promulgate the rules and regulation for the effective implementation of this act within one hundred eighty days from its effectivity. Within one hundred eighty days or six months, the implementing rules and regulations should have been promulgated by these name agencies. But more than four months have yet already elapsed and our IRR not yet been promulgated. Ergo, I am strongly pleading to this honorable body to please assist our about ten million senior citizens in the Philippines to petition persuade or ask the DBM, DSWD, DILG, League of the Cities of the Philippines, League of Municipalities of the Philippines to port with toward their work in promulgating the National Senior Citizens IRR. The Commission cannot function do its work as provided by Republica eleven thirty-five-zero because commissioners have not yet been appointed by the president. Our Filipino senior citizens have contributed immensely to the growth and progress of this country. As they reach the twilight of their lives, it is our responsibility as society to ensure the rights and privileges that proper obdation is given to them. Consolidation of all pertinent laws, rules, and regulations, and policies are pertinent to all senior citizens. The responsibility of National Senior Citizen Commission. However, the Commission cannot implement this task. If the appointing power of all offices of senior citizens or OSKA heads would still be with the local government units. More often than not, these OSKA offices are being used by local executives for their own political ambitions. OSKA heads who are appointed by the local executives are beholden to the letter. In order to become OSKA head, to be a political, their appointment should be emanate from the Commission. Ergo, it is respectfully prayed that this eighteen congress should join us in making the proper amendment of Republica eleven three-five-zero on this matter. Karangalan ko din pong ipakilala ang League of OSKA Heads sa buong Filipinas na pinamumunuan ng kanilang pangulo, si Ben Medina ng misamis occidental, Nonita Red, Sekjen ng wasalbay, at mga OSKA Head na nandito rin ang mga magiging commissioners ng NCSI. Andyan po ang ating senior commissioner na si Eleonor Duterte, Pastor Luis Moran ng Mindanao, Rodrigo Cinco, Eriqueta Rosales ng Visayas, Judge Agapito, at Attorney Romeo Manalo ng Luzon, at ang magiging chairman, Rodolfo Tanes ng Metro Manila. Ngayong pong hapon ito, karangalan po ng inyong kasamaan sa kongreso na kasama ko ang lahat ng mga mampabatas na kasama ko rito na noon seventeen congress, one hundred eighty-one congressmen. Ang nagapurbaro rito kasama na 'yung mga chairman na sila congressman na Johnny Pimentel, uh, Soler Agones, at marami pang iba. Kaya nga po, pinagdadasal ng sampung bilyon Filipino na senior citizen, tulungan niyo po kami na 'yung pangarap ng mga senior citizen ay maging makatutuhanan. IRR na lang pong hinihintay at mag-appoint ngangayim na komisioner and chairman upang ang pangarap na 'yan ay maging makatutuhanan at amasain ng lahat ng senior citizen sa buong Filipinas. Marami pong salamat! Merry Christmas! At babuhay po tayong lahat!
Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that the privileged speech of Congressman June Dato be referred to the committee rules.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved. The privileged speech of Congressman June Dato is hereby referred to the committee rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, next to deliver his privileged speech is from the Party List Cabayan. I move that we recognize Congressman Ron Salo.
Representative Ron Salo is hereby recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise today on a matter of personal privilege, that of expressing my deepest sense of pride and elation over the outcome of the 30th SEA Southeast Asian Games. Mr. Speaker, two weeks ago, I stood up to appeal to all our people to be united in our goal of showcasing to the world our culture, our talents, and our hospitality. I stand now prouder as a Filipino than ever before to thank everyone for his support in making an historic SEA Games hosting. Mr. Speaker, for two weeks, we have shown to Southeast Asia and to the rest of the world who we are as a nation and what we are capable of as a people, moving as one and winning as one. Most certainly, we were able to impress the world audience with arguably the best SEA Games opening ceremony in recent memory. This, despite the slew of criticisms that were hurled against the SEA Games organizers for a number of alleged managerial and administrative flaws and shortcomings that government critiques hyped in media a few days before the official opening to take away the shine from the polish. Thus, Chief Presidential Counsel and Presidential spokesperson Salvador Penello could not have said it better when he stated, thy catching sports and musical extravaganza did not escape unnoticed by Singapore's respected The Street Times, which commented that it took just two hours to wipe away a week's worth of bad headlines. With the conclusion of the Games, the Philippines emerged as the overall champion with a total tally of three hundred eighty-seven medals, broken down into one hundred forty-nine golds, one hundred seventeen silvers, and one hundred twenty-one bronzes, surpassing its performance fourteen years ago at the two thousand five SEA Games. Mr. Speaker, we have set a new benchmark in hosting from a spectacular opening, world-class accommodation, and world-class hospitality to a grand closing ceremony that has put the Filipino in the world map as an international host of high caliber. In fact, the international community was so impressed that a sports industry award gave a special excellence award to the Philippine Southeast Asian Games organizing committee headed by no less than our very own Speaker Alan Peter Caitano. And SPIAIA's Asia CEO, Mr. Eric M. Gotchok, stated that this recognition, referring to the special excellence award, is not only about the organizers, but more importantly, is a tribute to the Filipino people. The success of the organizing committee is anchored in the hard work, perseverance of the entire workforce, agencies, SEA Games volunteers, and the cooperation of the entire nation. Mr. Speaker, yes, there were minor glitches, particularly in the beginning that raised the concern of different sectors of society, including the netizens. But we immediately addressed the legitimate concerns as a manifestation of how we seriously took the responsibility and accountability that go with our hosting. Indeed, even as we wanted to show the world the best that we can offer, we knew that every snog, miniscule as they may seem, would reflect badly on our reputation as a people and as a nation. As such, and sadly, some quarters attempted to magnify and take advantage of these perceived shortcomings. With the vigilance of the organizers and of everyone though, we were able to stem the tide of unwarranted public criticisms and transform it into an unqualified support. Through the collective efforts of everyone involved, from the janitors to the traffic enforcers, to the volunteers, and to the highest leadership, adjustments and remedial measures were made and we came up with an event that we can all be proud of. Mr. Speaker, rough starts are normal in events of such magnitude, but in the end, all went well for us. The outcome was in fact exemplary. However, for those who only saw the negatives and discounted and did not weigh in the positives, I fear that there is something amiss with them. There is your defeatist attitude and disservice to our country. Nonetheless, my consolation is that they are the exceptions rather than the rule. On the other hand, there are worse cases than this lot. These were those who attempted to take advantage of the organizer's shortcomings by unnecessarily magnifying them. Rather than propose suggestions on how to address the shortcomings they have been complaining about or personally assisting the organizers just like what most volunteers did, they peddled lies and fake news while the abundance was on bars to organizers. And consider to the fact that it is the country's image that ultimately becomes the casualty of their concerted and organized efforts. Certainly, they have no desire or even a naught of concern in improving the country's sports as well... sports as what they wish to portray. They simply wish to embarrass the organizers and ultimately our beloved country for their selfish ends. The acts of these few were not only unpatrionic, but deemed treasonous acts against our own people. Having a crab mentality is too kind a description for what these people have done. I'm only happy though that we Filipinos have already grown wiser enough to discern your real intention, much less to fall for their diabolic schemes. Indeed, not even super typhoon Kisoi, nor their snarling traffic, nor the unwarranted criticisms, nor those people with malicious intentions were able to destroy, let alone prevent us from delivering our country's greatest show yet in the international stage. Like a runner in a marathon who stumbles and falls, gets back to his feet, and runs again to win the race, that is the Filipino with the indomitable spirit that was in great display during the thirtieth Sea Games. Mr. Speaker, we showed our fellow Southeast Asian members that the concepts of competition and fairness are not mutually exclusive, that we are fair and just even to our competitors. We are heartened and proud by the selfless act of Roger Kasugai, or the shouts of support by Filipinos for the more or less the athletes to inspire this fledging nation to win a medal and to not go home empty-handed. These are just the new benchmarks of sportsmanship, of what winning as one is truly all about, that the Filipinos have brought to the world with sports competition during and after this last Sea Games. Finally, we proved that with sports, our amity and camaraderie with all the members of Southeast Asia is strengthened despite the diverse cultures, languages, and historical backgrounds of its peoples. Mr. Speaker, allow me now to extend our warmest congratulations to everyone who contributed in making this event successful. To the members of the media, thank you for rising above your impulse to report every perceived shortcoming of the organizers, and for showing us that journalism can be a powerful tool in unifying us and in creating a positive outlook for our people. To the critiques, both the constructive and destructive ones, thank you for adding color to the country's hosting. You pushed the limits of the organizers and challenged them to do even better. To the volunteers and the private sectors who unselfishly shared their time and resources that greatly contributed to the success of this endeavor, thank you. This was indeed an epitome of genuine public-private partnership. To the organizers, particularly our Speaker who is the chairman of the Philippine Organizing Committee and POC Chairman Bambol Tolitino, thank you for remaining steadfast despite the seemingly insurmountable challenges thrown your way, particularly by those who are opposed to this government and who attempted to sabotage this event. To President Duterte, thank you for believing in the capacity of your people that they can deliver an excellent world-class hosting. To our athletes, thank you for giving your best and for exceeding your personal best to bring glory and honor to our country. Finally, to all our people, congratulations, we made it. Now let it reverberate in all corners of the world that we Filipinos are now ready to host international events of even greater magnitude. Muli, marami salamat sa mga janitors, ashers, traffic enforcers, LGU officials, sports officials, volunteers, organizers, mga atleta, ka Speaker Kayatano at Pangulong Duterte, sa isang di makakalimutan at makasaysayang Sea Games, saludo kami sa inyo. Higit sa lahat, ang ating pasasalamat sa Diyos, sa tagumpay na ating nakamit at kasayahan na ating nadarama bilang isang bansa. Muli, mabuhay at letang Pilipino, mabuhay ang Pilipinas. To God be all the glory.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Ron Salo to the Committee on Rules for appropriate action. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved. The privileged speech of Honorable Ron Salo is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the next to avail of the privileged hour is the Honorable Eric Martinez, and I request that he be recognized to deliver his privileged speech.
Honorable Eric Martinez is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Majority Floor Leader. Give me the numbers and let the numbers do the talking. Three hundred eighty-seven medals, one hundred forty-nine golds, one hundred seventeen silvers, one hundred twenty-one bronze, the biggest gold medal haul in the history of Philippines' sports. And allow me to read all the names of all five hundred-plus athletes who contributed to this cause in giving pride to flag and country. Bronze, Daniel Parantak, Wushu, Erlyn May Busakay, Arnis, Esra Ray, Yalong, Arnis, Edmel John Flores, Cycling, Avigail Rombawon, Cycling, Mary Flor Diaz, Weightlifting, Elizabeth Bates, Kiran Scout Noel Bates, Chernob Monica Estella, Aquatics Water Polo, Ninita Tabiano, Vilma Greenlys, Lawn Balls, Al Roland Lamas, Kurash, Lloyd Dennis Katipon, Kurash, Helenda Wa, Kurash, Rick Jason Seniales, Kurash, Sydney C., Kurash, John Set Gaho, Jonas Labares, Inso, Torn Ton Quini, Lucian, Wushu, Nestor Colonia, Weightlifting, Samantha Catantan, Fencing, Mark Julius Rodellas, Obstacle Course, Kurt Garin, Emmanuel Portasio, Leon Chocaryon, Ronald Lising, Lawn Ball, Mark Joseph Gonzalez, Ice Skating, Nathaniel Perez, Fencing. Pwede bang may background ang We Win As One? Na music? Na We Win As One? Jasmine Alcalde, Aquatic Swim, thank you, Jeffrey Ignacio Warren Quiamo, Billiards, Carlo Biado, Johan Chua, Billiards, Dines Dumaan, Pencatsiklat, Silat, Monica Torres, Efren Inigo, Inigo, Mary Pauline Fornea, Emmanuel Comendador, Duatlón, Joshua Lynn Bullo, Mark Joseph Gonzalez, Jason Huerte, Jovert Humawan, John Jeffrey Morsillos, Elidjan Ituda, Ray J., Ortoste, Amil Elidjan Berdaje, Vince Alisson Torno, Sepak Takraw, Roy Aldus Arayata, Ramon Jorge, Reynaldo Paras, Kelvin Tan, Jonathan Behar, Cesar Marasigan, Jasper Parulan, Francis Robert Yangga, Alexander Colet, Ricardo Tobias Papa, Christopher Polycarpio, David Huay, Underwater Hockey, Noelito Jose, Fencing, Chrissy Pavulayan, Judo, Kisei Nakano, Judo, Patrick Paul Manicad, Sambo, Rene Jose Mondihar, Sambo, Nicole, Justin Olivia, Jasmine Alcalde, Shandy Chua, Remedy Alexis Trule, Aquatics Swimming, Rene Furukawa, Judo, Jason Pontrombon, Patrobon, Tennis, Alberto Lim, Tennis, Princess Honey Arbilon, Modern Pentathlon, Cherry Ann Rodina, Bernadette Pons, Beach Volleyball, Maxine Stevan, Samantha Kyle Catantan, Wilhelmina Losada, Gil Justine Toño, Fencing, Don Navarro, Eric Prado, Daniel Villanueva, CJ Concepcion, Fencing, Edmar Jude Garcia, Beach Volleyball, Remedy Rule, Aquatic Swimming, Maria De Losario, Maria Lara Posadas, Katrina Hernandez, Marie Alexis C., Bowling, Carl David Azeneta, Judo, John Veron Ferrer, Judo, Reyoko Salinas, Judo, Jean Matsumara, Judo, Chloe Kennedy Anisleta, Aquatic Swimming, Helen Aklopen, Marian Mariano, Jed Andre, Kim Renzo Miguel Casenas, Patrick Del Santos, Sambo, Daniela Jean de la Pisa, Gymnastics, Ronald Oranza, John Mark Kabigao, John Paul Flores, George Ohner, Cycling, Chrissy Pavulayan, Maria Jelin Lopez, Jenilu Mosqueda, Kyomi Watanabe, Maria Takahashi, Reyoko Salinas, Megumi Delgado, Judo, Sara Pangilinan, Karatido, Yo Dennis Katipon, Marco Tomambad, Kapunggan Brian Kilotes, Carl Dave Azeneta, John Veron Ferrer, Jakilu Agon, Scarpe, Honrada Daril, John Mercado, Shin Matsumara, Kodo Nakano, Rick Jason Seniales, Judo, John Enrico Vazquez, Karatido, Sean Felipe, Michael Nakano, Nathaniel Perez, Jaime Biseo, Fencing, Princess Honey Arbilon, Michael Ver, Anton Komaling, Modern Pentathlon, Brandon Kyri Laquino, Jericho Marbelia, Sailing, Raymond Alferez, Alferos, Robin Loren Brown, Maureen Emily Shivers, Edgardo Alehan, Athletics, Alexis Mayag As, Muay Thai, Kim Robert Miranda, Muay Thai, Daisy Velasquez, Surfing, Johannes Avila, Shooting, John Mark Tohom, Surfing, Daisy Velas Valdez, Surfing, Edgar Ilas, Rocky Abala, Rowing, El Joshua Carino, Ismael Garospe Junior, Jonel Corcueva, John Ray Navara, Marcelo Felipe, Cycling, Princess Lorben, Erdilin Resulta Peralta, Soft Tennis, Nicole Erica Dantez, Ronaldin Alintea, Rebecca Sairil Torres, Karatido, Waterski and Wakeboarding, Christian Michael Hoston, Ralph Diego Villardo, and Francisco de la Cruz, Billiards, Efren, Bata Reyes, Golf, Idrick Jose Chan, Luis Miguel Castro, Shan Jean Ramos, Fencing, Kimberly Camahalan, Aileen Nicole Corti, Queen Dennis Dalmasio, Jaelin Nakano, The Whole Team of Isaki, Yu, Tigornita, Sikakito, Spafford, Chong, Samson, Relampagos, Regencia, Pastrana, Imperial, George Gatiel, Gabriel Javier, Foglister, Isepi, Bengzon, Skateboarding, Rydel Grace Abarico, Traditional Boat Race, Burgos, De los Santos, Taliedo, Gako, Roa, Mark, Frias, Norwell, Cajes Remarin, Selenyo, Baligasa, Almencion, Esguera, Solis, Traditional Boat Race, Polo, Odilon, Michael Odilon Romero, our dear Deputy Speaker Mikey Romero, Antonio Se, Stefano, Benjamin, Eusebio, Athletics, Sunny Wagdos, Gymnastics, Charmaine Dolar, Karatido, Mesorianno, Joan Bernis Orbón, Jason Raul Macalay, Karatido, John Enrico Vazquez, Mark, Andrew Manantan, Adam Bondo, Ivan Christopher Agustin, Karatido, Sharif Afif, Karatido, Ira Villegas, Boxing, John Taylor D., Jiu-Jitsu, Ian Clark Bouista, Boxing, Luke Miguel Gebby, Aquatic Swimming, Veronica Garcés, Taekwondo, BB Jessica Kanabal, Taekwondo, Jefferson Manatad, Wrestling, Dex Ian Chavez, Taekwondo, Kurt Pahuels, Taekwondo, Jemika, Alisa, Jimmy Avila, Squash, Anferni Lopez, Clinton Kingsley, Bautista Francis Medina, Medina, Eric Sean Crey, Athletics, Joyda Gagnaw, Athletics, Ron Sidik Abayeron, Huerte, Ortoste, and Bogier, Sepak Takraw, Bandoy Sinugbuhan, Tammy Sukalit, Sepak Takraw, Richard Gonzalez, Table Tennis, Jeffrey Rhoda, Billiards Sports, April Epinger, Jiu-Jitsu, Peter Lawrence, Nimbán, Robin Brown, Francis Medina, Carol Madidek, Boxing, Indoor Hockey, Castillo Castro, De los Santos, Lumaplin, Laraya, Lumbo, Obasa, Racing, Sebastián, Assis, Parungau, Landicho, Athletics, Janri Ubas, Eloy Saluson, Jensel Lumabas, Maureen Evelyn Shivers, Robin Loren Brown, Edgardo Alehan, Miguel Carlo Del Prado, Frederick Ramirez, Hoy Me Sekita, Andre Alvar, Beach Handball, Bahay, Dobusel, Harris, Pangandaman, Tasco, Tabuso, Valdez, Varela, Sandy, Lasangui, Silver, Michael Angelo Marquez, Stephanie Sabalo, Dance Sport, John Fablier Senisa, Weightlifting, Jude Liver Rodriguez, Arnis, Vicente Tomas, Stefano Juán, Miguel Eduardo Augustus Angire, Polo, Nino Sorban, Cycling, Alisson, Cristel Perticheto, Ice Skating, Christopher Kalusa, Mark Jason Gayon, Mark Joy Rehimen, Dance Sport, The Aquatics Water Polo Team, Amilla Dahid, Anota, Belio, Canete, Gomez, Gonzalez, Reyes, Salonga Seriano, Sikat, Valdez, Yu, Mumar Alamara, Tryatlon, Kim Remolino, Kim Kilgro, Lawn Ball, Abatayo, Mercado Dagpin, Lawn Ball, Baronda, Hotters, Agonoy Bradborn, Billy Joel Valenzuela, Salento Arnis, Seledonyo Tayao, Shooting, Cycling, Barbara, El Yassar Junior, Kurash, Bianca May Estrella, Wushu, Jones, Yabres, Inso, Duatlón, Duatlón, Joey De Los Reyes, Kurash, Denilu Mosqueda, Weightlifting, Margaret Colonia, Raisa, Jessel Sanchez, Arnis, Mark David Puson, Arnis, Mary Francine Padios, Pencatsilat, Didion Padua, Wushu, An, Erin Anto, Weightlifting, Christian Concepcion, Fencing, Carlos Yulo, Gymnastics, Milky May Tejares, Obstacle Force, The Team of Lawn Ball, Toiko, Asunsion, and Knight, The Underwater Team of Baldonado, Chua, Nagit, Uy, Buenafe, Templo, Lim, Lim, Uy, and On Yanko, The Underwater Hockey Team of Arayata, Jorge, Paras, Tan, Behar, Marasigan, Parulan, Yangga, Colet, Tobias Papa, David Huay, Fencing, Abelia, Pinyel, Aquatic Swimming, Remedy Alexis Rule, Rusia May Bayasan of Muay Thai, and Ayrendin Lipatan, Samuel Herman, Modern Pentathlon, Tito Dinopol, Shooting, John Abad, Amo Saibit Abad, Pencatsilat, Cristiana Means, Skateboarding, Jelin Baldonado, Underwater Hockey, Buenafe, Canlas, Chua, Lim, Nagit, Templo, Uy, Lim, On Yanko, Obstacle Force, Sherwin Mohammed, Obstacle Course, Beriso, Lorien Marisco, Mary Join Tabal, Athletics, German Prado, Cycling, Hermi Makaranas of Kanu, Rene Catalan of Sambo, Kenneth Chua, Patrick Milnuke, Frederick Ong, Merwin Tan of Bowling, Alvin Barbero, Jeffrey Rhoda of Billiards, Luke Michelle Gebby, Illustre, Uzam, and Hatch of Aquatic Swimming, Tennis, Roben Gonzalez, and Tret, Yuwi, Norman Montalvo, Karatido, Rina Babanto, Jacob Melia, Taekwondo, Rina Babanto, Laksa, and Josel Nanoblau, Taekwondo, Skateboarding, Renzo Mark Feliciano, Cristiana Nicole Means, Taekwondo Again, Crisostomo, King Perez, Darius, and Chana Dominic Oliva. Taekwondo, Chana Dominic Oliva, Swimming, Chloe Kennedy Anisleta, Sailing, Boyano and Ferrer, Softball, The Team of Garcia, Paredo, Batan, Reparit, Rosales, Ray, Aliling, Rosales, Cabrera, Reparit, Baharisas, De Castro, Diaz, Henerozo, Lucas, and Pagkaliwagan, Billiards Sport, Rubilen Amit, Surfing, Jerp Maid Agudo, Rogelio Esquivel, Waterski and Wakeboarding, Samantha Vernudes, and Rafael Trinidad, The Team of Rugby, Duffy, Denuyo, Roxan, Nicole Kovanen, Indigne Legaski, Milby, Pasri, Sales, Tudok, Danton, Ono and Rodriguez, Muay Thai, Janelin Olsim, Erica Bomagaw, Ryan Hakiri, Duke Pandewa, Mariano Masanox, Athletics, and Skateboarding, James Daiparin, Silver, Aquatics Swimming, Christina Marinot, Athletics, Aquatic Swimming of Isleta, Mangawang, Rule, and Alcalde, Swimming Again of Rule, Oliva, Chua, and Alcalde, Taekwondo, Alcantara, Uy, Delio, and Alora, Billiards Sports, Cheska Centeno, Wrestling, Michael Catter, Jason Balabal, Margarito Agana, Jenna Napoles, Jiu-Jitsu, Mark Alexander Lin, Jiu-Jitsu, Irish, Magno Boxing, John Pingot, Wrestling, Marjon Pianar, Boxing. John Pingot Wrestling, Marjon Pianar Boxing, Sharizen Napa Windsurfing, Garcia, Squash, Robert, Tomar Banguli Balangi Kickboxing, Visa Pasuit Boxing, Renalin Dakel Kickboxing, Ressa Aragon Taekwondo, Carter Lily Athletics. The Team of Squash of Vergonia, Garcia, David and Buraga. Athletics, The Team of Nelson Richardson, Richardson and North. Cycling, Daniel Kaluwag, Daniel Patrick Dance Sport, Debbie Mahinay. Shooting, Carlos Karag, Wrestling, Neumitener. Wrestling, Alvin Lobregito, Joseph Angana Wrestling, Luigi Laderal Jiu-Jitsu, Osfoi Wrestling, Ronil Tubog Wrestling, Johnny Morte Wrestling, Mark Harry Jones Athletics, William Morrison Athletics. The Team of Volleyball, The Golden Silver of Men's Volleyball. The Team of Marcos, Umandal, Intal, Kalinking, Alpara, Retamar, De Guzman, Saura, Lopez, Abadilia, Bagunas, Polborosa, Espeso and Malabunga. Athletics, Joyda Gagnaw Esports, Alexander Laveres, Judo Gilbert Ramirez. And now Mister Speaker, we go for gold. Double Gold Medalists, Agata Wong of Ushu. Double Gold Medalists, Carlos Edriel Yulo of Gymnastics. Dance Sport, Michael Marquez and Stephanie Saballo. Dance Sport, Wilbert Anso and Pearl Marie Cañeda. Dance Sport, Anso and Cañeda. Dance Sport, Marquez and Saballo. Arniz, Jezebel Morcilio. Sepak Takraw, The Team of Desiree, Jean Marie, Mary Ann and Sara Jean Sepak Takraw. The Team of Melodio Junior, Emmanuel, Jason John Jeffrey and John John. Arniz, Mike Banyares and Arniz, Billardo Unamay. Dance Sport, Mischa and Nualla. Arniz, Taliedo, Dexler Holambau Arniz. Dance Sport, Gayon and Rehimen. Dance Sport, Mischa and Nualla. Dance Sport, Mischa and Nualla. Dance Sport, Gayon and Rehimen. Triathlon, Kim Mang Robang. Triathlon, Rambo Chikano. Arniz, Abigail Abad, Jedha Soryano, Josh Ashley Monville and Siena Del Monte. Weightlifting, Heidelin Diaz. Lawn Ball, Rodell Abayo and Angelo Morales. Basketball Women, Animan Bernardino Castro and Pontejos. Basketball Three-on-Three Men, Perez, Perkins, Tau Toa and Uzam. Triathlon, The Team of Mang Robang, Fernando Casares, Adorna and Chikano. Arniz, Carlos Tejada, Elmer Manlapas, Jesper Hookire, Duathlon, Monica Torres, Lea Dennis Belgira Cycling, Estige Luanen Kurash, Chan Derek Farr Cycling, Chris Manuel Delphine Arniz, Mary Alin Aldiger Arniz. Ushu, Divine Wali, Jessie Aligaga, Francisco Solis, Arnel Mandal and Clemente Tagubara. Obstakil Course, The Team of Redentor de la Serna Divina and Moncada. Obstakil Course, The Team of Bowler, Rehino Rodriguez Sanchez. Obstakil Course Again, Kevin Jeffrey Pasqua and Rochelle Suarez. Shooting, Marley Martir. Weightlifting, Christelle Macharon. The Shooting Team of Martir, Quiros and Bald Divino. Swimming, James Deiparin, Muay Thai, Kalika and Galasa. Cycling, German Prado. Skateboarding, Margeline Didal and Daniel Leatherman. Fencing, Jaylin Nicanor, Judo, Shugen Nagano. Sambo, Mark Edwin Strigil, Chino Si Sambo, Kiomi Watanabe Judo, Modern Pentathlon, Princess Honey Arbilon, Samuel Herman, Edmar Takwel of Pencat Silat. Obstakil Course, Marvin Duarte Obstakil Course, Menche Sandy, Christine Halasco Athletics. Michael Ver Anton Komaling Modern Pentathlon, Maria Takahashi, Judo, Chris Nieves Rowing, Daniela Reggie de la Pisa Gymnastics. Joani Del Gacho, Meljanjen Caballero Rowing, Hermi Makaranas Canoo, Francis Alcantara and Jason Pat Rombon of Tennis. Soft Tennis, Noel Conchita Corazon, Manyalak, Junat Sukil of Karatido, Joseli Nanobla of Taekwondo, Justin Jacob Mella, Rafael Mella, Rodolfo Reyes of Taekwondo. Fencing of Abelia Bustos Estimada and Ragin. Gold, Taekwondo of Jordan Dominguez, EJ Obgenya of Athletics, Lester Troy of Sailing, Melkanjen Caballero of Rowing. The Team of Softball, Rua Ursavia Balestero, Yando Rusia Almonte. Altomonte, Antoli Hano, Basa, Kator, Damasing, De la Torre, Gabriel, Halandoni, Padada, Padasas and Maguad. Billiards Sport, Cesca Centeno, Roger Kasogay Surfing, Nible Blancada Surfing, Cristiano Nicole Mins Skateboarding, Luis Kaygo, Bianca Pagdangan Soft Golf, Rodolfo Reyes Taekwondo, Manyalak and Soleta of Soft Tennis. Waterski and Wakeboarding, Larson and Wallace. The Team of Baseball of Almonte, Bernardo, Casalan, Posito, Castillo, De Guzman, Yarau, Igia, Yesmundo, Herrera, Inobio, Haspin, Ligwayan, Losano, Macasayet. Athletics, Christina Marinot. Rugby Team of Billyaba, Calau, Johnson, Matsus, Luceno, Canon, Palabay, Reyes, Villazor, Amar and Alonso. Skateboarding of Jerico Francisco, Arielle Lampachen of Muay Thai, Philip de la Armino, Jaime Rafael Delange of Skateboarding, Natalie Ross, Uy of Athletics, William Morrison Athletics, Roger Ladon Boxing, Josie Gabuco Boxing. Sailing, Rich Lee Baladares, Rich Lee Magsanay, Robin Cruz, Joel Meharito, Wook Dimapillis and Edgar Billyapanah, James Palikte Boxing. Vansy Kaibigan Windsurfing, Gaylord Coveta of Windsurfing, Melvin Caliano is Clinton Kinshley Bautista of Athletics. The Team of Raymark Vergonia, Garcia and David of Squash. Billiards Sports, Dernis Orculio. Kickboxing, Jerry Olsim Boxing, Charlie Suarez, Kurt Bryan Barbosa Taekwondo, Nesti Petesio of Boxing, Yumir Felix Marshall of Boxing. The Team of Athletics of Luzon, Lopena, Christina Marinot and Eric Sean Crey. Taekwondo, Pauline Louis Lopez, Dave Say of Taekwondo, Samuel Tomas Morrison of Taekwondo. The Team of Esports of Villa, Bata Anon, Castro Mayor, Rebo and Arcangel. Billiards Sports of Rubilen Amit, Sara Dekinan Athletics, Noel Norada Wrestling, Jason Baucas Wrestling, Paul Martin de la Cruz Archery, Rachel Ann de la Cruz Archery, Jamie Christine Lim Karatido, Carlo Paalam Boxing, Carlo Angelo Peña Jiu-Jitsu, Margarita Ochoa Jiu-Jitsu, Dean Michael Rojas Jiu-Jitsu. The Team of Sailing, Magsanay, Meharito, Cruz, Dimapillis, Billyapanah, Balyadares. Esports, Guerra, Manalaisai, Vargas, Alviso and Rushton. The Team of Shooting of Ang, Conge Karag, Alexander Topasio. Esports, Caviar Napoleon, Acampado Soft Tennis, The Team of Alcoceva, Arsilia, Damyan, Mamawal, Maduriano, Deo Talatayon, Jiu-Jitsu and Ramirez, Adriano Dolfo, Guggenheim. Eric Sean Crey Again of Athletics, Gina Inyong of Kickboxing, Kiomi Watanabe of Judo. The Team of Basketball of Franz Cabinpin, Ana Alicia Castillo and Yunix Chan, Jose Nabalam Prado, Amimam, Bernardino Castro, Hayes and Pontejos and Tonko. The Athletics of Arist Toledo, Jean Sacklag of Kickboxing. And the Men's Basketball Team of Chris Ross, Carl Stan Handigear, Machurite Dick Manuel Marshall Lassiter, June Mar Pahardo, J Troi Rosario, Japet Aguilar, J Red Slotter, Stanley Pringle, Lewis Alfred, De Norio and Kiper Rabena with their coach Timo Tikone. Mister Speaker, For God, Flag and Country. NSA's All Coaches, Trainers, Volunteers, the BCDA, POC Headed by our dear comrade Congressman Bambol Tolentino, PSC Chairman Butch Ramirez and Commissioners Pisgok, our Speaker Alan Peter Cayetano. You nailed it. We nailed it as a nation. This is the best games ever hosted by our country. I've seen 1991, I have seen 2005. 2019 tops them all. One hundred forty-nine goals. The most number of events and the most number of athletes. President Rodrigo Rua Duterte, The Number One Sports Patron, Our Number One Sports Fan and Senator Bongo. You nailed it. We nailed it as a nation. And finally, onwards to Hanoi 2021, to Tokyo 2020, and let the gains and momentum of Philippine sports from the Southeast Asian Games be carried on as we move forward, as we seek the first Olympic gold of this nation. Mabuhay ang bansang Pilipinas, mabuhay ang atletang Pilipino. Bakit puro pangalan? Simple lamang. Darating sa kasaysayan at may susulat. May git limandaang Pilipino. On that graceful day of November thirty to December eleven, they gave their all for God, Flag and Country. Let history be kind to them. Maraming salamat po.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I want that we recognize the Honorable Raoul Del Mar of Cebu for his manifestation.
Honorable Raoul Del Mar is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, thank you Majority Leader. Connection with the speech just delivered by our colleague, the Honorable Eric Martinez of the Second District of Venezuela's City, this is not an interpolation. It is a manifestation because it's coincidental that I had on my desk an excerpt of the local papers we have the Fremont in Cebu dated December thirteen with the title "Cebuanos Deliver for Nations Glory." So I would just like to read some excerpts of this article. And I would start that hosting the thirtieth edition of the Southeast Asian Games proved rewarding and gratifying for the Philippines after it seized the overall championship of the Baenian Sports Conclave for the first time since 2005. Team Philippines ended its highly productive campaign as stated earlier with a whopping one hundred forty-nine gold, one-one-seven silver and one-twenty-one bronze medals to land atop the standings of the eleven-nation athletic meet that ran for two weeks. Part of the nation's sweeping success are the spirited Cebuanos. Athletes who won a total of sixty-one medals, broken into nineteen golds, nineteen silvers, twenty-four bronzes out of the Philippines' record of the Southeast Asians Hall. I will no longer enumerate the listing here of the Cebuanos who also won the medals because the gentleman already enumerated everyone from the country. So I would just request, Mister Speaker, that to save time, that I request that the complete listing of the Cebuanos who delivered medals also from gold, silver and bronze to be part of my manifestation. Which excerpt, particular excerpt, I would just submit to this scenographer, Mister Speaker, Majority Leader.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Eric Martinez and the manifestation of the Honorable Raoul Del Mar to the committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. So move, Mister Speaker.
There any objection? There being none. Motion is approved. Go to the leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we extend the privilege hour for another twenty minutes. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved. The privilege hour is hereby extended.
Mister Speaker, next to avail of the privilege hour is the Honorable Khalid Di Mapuro of Lanau del Norte and I move that he be recognized. So move, Mister Speaker.
Honorable Khalid Di Mapuro is recognized.
Auza Bilahim, Neshetan Hirahim, Bismillah Hirakman Hirahim. Speaker, colleagues, assalamualaikum murakmatullahi barakatuh. In 2017, conflict erupted in Marawi City, Lanau del Sur. Thousands evacuated from Marawi to nearby cities and provinces. The human toll of the Marawi siege are as follows. One hundred sixty-eight government soldiers killed, around fourteen hundred wounded. Nine hundred seventy-eight members of the Maute ISIS group killed, twelve captured. The President declared martial law on May twenty-three, 2017 by virtue of Proclamation Number Two One Six entitled, Declaring a State of Martial Law and Suspending the Privilege of the Rite of Habius Corpus in the Whole of Mindanao. Both the Senate and the House of Representatives passed resolutions expressing full support of Proclamation Two One Six. The validity of Proclamation Two One Six as stated in the Constitution is sixty days. However, the military did not anticipate the difficulty of urban warfare in Marawi City. Proclamation Two One Six was due to lapse on July twenty-two, 2017 with the battle in Marawi ongoing and the end far from sight. As required by the Constitution, Congress was called upon to extend martial law beyond sixty days. A special joint session was held by the House of Representatives and the Senate. Congress as a joint body extended martial law to December 2017. It was in this period that government forces were able to declare victory against ISIS-affiliated terrorists. At the end of 2017, Malacanyang requested for another extension of martial law. The purpose was to continue the military's efforts to rid the south of its security threats. Congress convened again for a joint session to respond to the President's letter requesting an extension of martial law until December thirty-one, 2018. Congress approved the request and martial law was extended for one year. At the end of 2018, Malacanyang once again requested for another extension of martial law. Sustained economic growth and the continuing effort to end terrorism and insurgency in the region of Mindanao was the principal reason for a third extension. On December twelve, 2018, Congress voted in favor of extending martial law until December thirty-one, 2019, two weeks from today. As a district representative of Lanau del Norte, I have been consistent in my support for martial law. I voted yes in the House Resolution supporting the President's Declaration of Martial Law. I voted yes for the first extension of martial law. I voted yes for the second extension of martial law. I voted yes for the third extension of martial law. And when a fourth extension was being considered, I was favor of another extension of martial law. Now that the President no longer intends to extend martial law, I feel uncertain about the return of the status quo in Mindanao. I am grateful to the administration and the military for their efforts to remove all threats from the Lanau region. The military has recommended the lifting of martial law because in their assessment, the security climate is now at a manageable level. I don't refute the military. They have been successful in their campaign against terrorism. But I am all too familiar with the But I am all too familiar with the long-term outcome of military operations in my part of western Mindanao. For example, they succeeded in defeating the MLF during Arab's All-Out War, yet the MLF persisted. They neutralized the MLF after the Mowa AD debacle, yet the MLF returned. They have killed several Abu Sayyaf leaders, yet the Abu Sayyaf continues to operate. They obliterated the Maute ISIS group, yet ISIS affiliates still have a presence in the Lanau del Sur boundaries. This is the cycle I see in Mindanao. Military operations, resurgence of threat. Military operations, resurgence of threat, and the cycle continues. Post-martial law, Mindanao should ensure that terrorists and their affiliated armed groups will not reorganize and rebuild. We need to look into the factors that led to martial law in the first place. What are the security gaps of Mindanao? There are four concerns that I wish to place on record today. I will not pretend to be an expert terrorism analyst for Mindanao, but we can all agree that ISIS and Al Qaeda, through the Abu Sayyaf and the Adhemaa Islamia, have infiltrated Mindanao. Mindanao is an identified transnational hub for terrorism. My first set of policy questions. What are we doing to protect our national boundaries with Indonesia and Malaysia? Is our territorial dispute over Sabah preventing us from securing our boundaries? How are foreign fighters entering our country? My next concern is as follows. When the SaF-44 incident happened in Magindanao, I wasn't surprised. You have to properly coordinate with the Moro Islamic Liberation Front when entering their territory. The case of SaF-44 attempting to capture bomb maker Marwan is an example of the difficulty in executing police operations in the vicinity of MLF base camps. How can we properly secure the region if MLF base camps are safe havens for Moro fighters and their affiliates? To date, security forces do not have the liberty of entering MLF territory without prior coordination until the peace process is completed and the ceasefire mechanism lifted. Third policy question, we should learn from history. When the MLF peace process succeeded in the Ramos administration, it also gave birth to three organizations: the Abu Sayyaf, the MLF, and the MNLF Reformists. Moro fighters disgruntled with MNLF Chair Noor Miswari's leadership changed allegiance, ultimately making the Moro Islamic Liberation Front the acknowledged organization for the Moro rebellion. Now that we are undertaking the demobilization process for MLF combatants, how many are willing to surrender their firearms? The MLF once boasted to be eighty thousand strong. Does that mean they have eighty thousand firearms to surrender? I point this out because firearms not surrendered by the MLF may eventually end up in the hands of another organization that intends to bear arms against our government. Fourth policy issue. We have a weak PNP presence in the autonomous region. For the duration of the martial law debates, the Philippine National Police took the backseat while the military took the lead. This is not surprising considering that the military is the primary agency to instill peace and order in the autonomous region. Some blame the institutional control of the arm over the PNP under the ARMM law. But because of the president's "One Nation, One Police" policy, the BOL provides a chief PNP and the DILG with full control over the armed police. Considering that the Bangsamoro Organic Law is deemed ratified, will the national government provide a sufficient police force in the Bangsamoro region to maintain peace and order? Last policy concern. Those of us who live in conflict areas or conflict-affected areas know too well that the military solution is never a long-term solution. Whether it be insurgency or terrorism. The true enemy of the state is the ideology that one must take up arms against their government to correct a social injustice. The true war against insurgency and terrorism is in the hearts of our people. We have to win them over through inclusive governance, not military might. In the previous administration, the Mindanao Development Agency conducted conflict mapping for the region of Mindanao. The conflict map identifies and illustrates conflict areas wherein security forces have had encounters with armed groups. This was the basis for the creation of a peace and development plan for Mindanao. Unfortunately, the plan was not adopted. Taking this as an example, what does the security situation in Mindanao look like today? Where are the identified conflict areas? And what are the non-military government interventions that will be implemented in these parts of Mindanao? I admit, when the announcement to lift martial law in Mindanao was recommended by the military, I was disheartened. Not because I am endeared to martial law, but because there was no transition plan provided to face out martial law. All I read about was the need to amend the Human Security Act, in which I do not fully agree with. The reason being is that the Human Security Act is not entirely applicable in our area. High-profile terrorists like Marwan and Isnilon Hypilon can never be detained, only neutralized because they travel with a small army. The objectives of Proclamation 216 was more than likely achieved this year. But I cannot accept an amended Human Security Act as an offset to the lifting of martial law. What the martial law administrator should do is address our security needs. DND, PNP, and DILG should be called to Congress to explain the deployment of our police and military personnel in Mindanao. The deployment of our security forces should be presented and discussed in Congress to ensure that we can sustain peace and order in the Mindanao region. Do we have enough battalions deployed in areas where terrorism is present, like Lanau del Sur, Magindanao, and Silu? Do buffer areas such as Lanau del Norte, North Cotobato, and Basilan have the security forces needed for blocking operations to prevent terrorism from spreading to the rest of the region? Did Krame provide sufficient mobile groups in Regions 9, 10, 12, and BARM to augment the local police force against terrorism and insurgency? Our objective in post-martial law Mindanao should be to prevent a resurgence of the elements that led to declaration of martial law. Martial law was never a silver bullet to solve Mindanao's peace and order problems. What Proclamation 216 was is a short-term solution to the security gaps in select areas of Mindanao. Considering that Congress granted martial law to the executive, we should enact our oversight powers, review the conduct of martial law in Mindanao, and determine the policy direction of the executive post-martial law. At the very least, it should address the influx of foreign fighters, policing of MLF territory, the inventory of MLF firearms for surrender, the strengthening of the PNP in the BARM, and the government programs for conflict-affected communities in Mindanao. I'd like to end by stating. As the new year arrives and the chapter of martial law in Mindanao is gone, I pray that the Duterte administration will leave a legacy of a peaceful Mindanao. I hope that in the following year, the 18th Congress will be proactive in ensuring that the declaration of martial law will bear fruit and transform conflict within areas of Mindanao into productive and peaceful communities. We should not let our guard down in the months to come. We should be diligent as legislators to be certain that martial law has made a difference in Mindanao. Speaker, colleagues, thank you for the privilege to speak. Peaceful holidays to all. Assalamualaikum murakmatullahi barakatuh.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Kalid Di Maporo to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection? There being none, motion is approved. The privileged speech of Honorable Kalid Di Maporo is referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members wishing to avail of the privilege hour, I move that we close the period of privilege hour. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, we would like to elect additional members of the We House contingent to the Bicamara Conference Committee on House Bill Number 1026 and Senate Bill Number 1074. As member of the majority, the Honorable Jonathan C. Alvarado. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure on first reading as well as communications and resolution. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There any objection? There being none, motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill, the resolutions.
Committee Report, additional reference of business, Committee Report Number 142 by the Committee on Government Reorganization Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 5832.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 143 by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 5840.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report 144, the Committee on Natural Resources on House Bill Number 3119.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 5832 and the Committee Report Number 142 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 5832, An Act Creating the Department of Filipinos Overseas and Foreign Employment, Defining Its Mandate, Powers, and Functions, Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the House Bill is that we are in the period of sponsorship. And with that, I move that we recognize the Honorable Marvin Mourinho Batangas to deliver his sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Mourinho is recognized.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. To the authors of the bills creating the Department of Filipinos Overseas and Foreign Employment. My esteemed colleagues, guests, resource persons, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. The Committee on Government Reorganization, joined with the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs, have considered and consolidated thirty-nine bills to come up with a substitute bill. And I'd like to thank the head of the TWG, Congressman Joey Sartes Alceda, for heading the TWG. And the bills consolidated are Numbers 2, 335, 526, 1439, 1449, 2067, 2207, 2216, 2317, 2319, 2368, 2409, 2412, 2425, 2547, 2850, 2982, 3168, 3246, 3274, 3313, 3440, 3514, 3637, 3663, 3888, 3940, 4065, 4165, 4173, 4189, 4576, 4663, 4687, 4814, 4884, 5146, 5171, and 5256. Introduced by representatives, Speaker Alan Peter Campaniero S. Caetano, Maria Larni Caetano, Paulo Z. Duterte, Rosemary Baby Arenas, Michael Edgar V. Aglipay, Luis N. Campos Jr., Christine Singson Mihán, Joey Sartes Alceda, Prospero A. Pichai, Jr., Michael L. Romero, Carlo Lisandro L. González, Eriko G. Yap, Joseline Puatulfo, Rowena Nina Taduran, Sherelpi De Losa Montalia, Ferdinand L. Hernández, Precious Sipolito Castelo, Alfred Vargas, Luis Ramón El Rey Villaverde, Jr., Ana Marie Villarasa Suárez, David J.J. Suárez, Aliza Shinatan, Aurelio Don González Jr., Yedda Marie Romaldes, Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes, Camille A. Villar, Vilma Santos Reckto, Lucy Torres Gómez, Jose Antonio R. C. Alvarado, Lianda B. Bolilia, Joy Myra S. Tambuntin, Alberto Paciao, Ron Salo, Aloisa T. Lim, Teodrico T. Harresco Jr., Eric L. Olivares, Sol Aragonés, Jumele Anthony Espino, Joaquín M. Chapeco Jr., Cristina Lexi B. Tutor, Jonathan Keith Flores, MacNeil Lusotan, Juan Fidel Felipe Nograles, Raymond Democrito G. Mendoza, and yours truly Mario Vittorio Marvin Mourinho, Enrico M. Pineda, Mark Go, Jose Ong Jr., Emery U. Wanyo Dizon, Samantha Luis Vargas, Alfonso, and Jesús Bong Suntay. We have many distinguished authors moving for the approval of this measure. Shows our high regard and deep appreciation for our OFWs and all Filipino migrants. I am thankful that the consolidated or substitute bill of the thirty-nine OFW bills entitled "An Act Creating the Department of Filipinos Overseas and Foreign Employment, Defining Its Mandate, Powers, and Functions, Appropriating Funds Therefore" is included in the agenda of today's meeting. At this point, allow me to apprise the plenary that the attempt to pass a law creating a department for Filipino overseas and foreign employment dates back from the 12th Congress. Since the start of Congress under the 1987 Constitution, the consistency of legislative intent on the part of our colleagues in the House of Representatives to enact such a law is very much evident over the years. Unfortunately, efforts back then could not hurdle the challenges to push for a law creating such a department. Until today, and we have no less than the president Rodrigo Roa Duterte, known and lovingly referred to by all OFWs as their Tatay Digong, to thank for bringing us several steps closer to making this vision a reality. Today, ten percent of our total population are based overseas. Many of them on temporary work contracts. Based on POEA data, around five thousand Filipinos leave the country every day to work abroad. More than fifty percent of whom are women. As migrants and foreign workers, our cababaians are exposed to threats and all forms of severe exploitations such as excessive fees leading to debt bondage, illegal recruitment or illegal termination or substitution of contracts, human trafficking, physical, verbal, and sexual abuse, work-related disabilities, mental depression, extreme trauma, and at times even death. All of us in this hall have listened to more sub-stories than we can handle involving the abuse and maltreatment of our constituents abroad. This measure to create a department for Filipinos, Filipinos Overseas and Foreign Employment is this administration's response to the clamor of our fellow countrymen overseas. The DFO bill provides for the basic organizational structure of the new department. Initial operating funds, provisions strengthening the mechanisms for assistance to nationals such as the creation of the ATN Career Corps and augmenting the ATN fund, and provisions to create effective reintegration programs for those who eventually come home. Moreover, in December 2018, the Philippines adopted the UN Global Compact for Safe, Orderly, and Regular Migration. It has twenty-three objectives in this new department. This new department will hasten and ensure their fulfillment to enable us to live up to the international labor standards. The new department envisioned in this bill ultimately seeks to have an integrated, fast, responsive, and adequate service to all Filipino overseas regardless of status, whether regular or irregular. However, not only do we have an obligation to protect our Filipinos abroad, but imperative, it is imperative for us to recognize their contribution to the Philippine economy. Given the title of modern-day heroes, it is worthy to mention that the OFW remittances account for ten percent of the gross domestic product of the country. With such a significant contribution, it is but fitting response that we do all what we can to help and protect them. The passage of this bill reinforces the administration's The passage of this bill reinforces the administration's conviction that migration should never be an act of desperation but rather an informed and safe choice that every Filipino freely and willingly makes in the pursuit of decent work. For all the merits of this priority bill and on behalf of the Committees on Government Reorganization and Overseas Workers Affairs, we submit to this plenary the consolidated bill that seeks to create the Department of Filipino Overseas and Foreign Employment, or the DFO, for its consideration and approval. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, next to deliver his sponsorship speech is the Honorable Raymond Mendoza of the TUCP party list, and I move that he will be recognized. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Raymond Mendoza is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the Committee on Overseas Workers to which the bill creating the Department of Filipino Overseas and Foreign Employment has been secondarily referred to, it is my distinct honor to sponsor this measure. This bill that we are taking up today is the most important one of all the overseas workers as well as all Filipinos overseas since this will be the culmination of the long-held dream of having their very own department that shall house all agencies of government which handles overseas workers and immigrant affairs. Mr. Speaker, almost everyone in the past and up to now have paid homage to our new heroes. But to refresh our memory, with the latest data, from the Banco Central de Filipinas has just recently announced that the dollars sent home by the expatriate Filipinos continue to rise in September this year as both land and sea bays remitted more cash to their local beneficiaries. The BSP further announced that personal remittances of Filipinos under working or living abroad hit $2.6 billion, Mr. Speaker, that is in dollars, in September 2019, up 6.3% from the $2.5 billion reported in the same year last year. This brought personal remittances for the first nine months of 2019 to $24.6 million, or billion, rather, billion dollars, up 3.9% from the $23.7 billion a year ago. Take note, Mr. Speaker, last year it was $32.2 billion for 2018, and this year it is expected to hit around $34 billion. Hence, Mr. Speaker, this is a small reward to our new heroes as compared to their gargantuan contribution to our country's economy for the last several decades. The primordial purpose of this measure is to create a government structure that will house all relevant government agencies that have mandates and functions that protect the rights and interests of the OFWs and the overseas Filipinos in general. While there may have been laudable proposals that were discussed in a series of meetings of the Technical Working Group, my thanks to the jointly chaired by Congressman Joey Sardeda and Eric Beneda. Thank you, sir. To consolidate more than 30 House bills to include the build of some new policies that would directly affect the welfare of OFWs, these proposals are better addressed and deliberated under our committee, the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs. Under this measure, the secretary shall be assisted by five under secretaries, which means that additional officers may be created and even our hard-working seafarers can have their own office of undersecretary minority time affairs, as I'm sure, and I'm sure, that the secretary of this department will see fit to create. Indeed, this bill is quite comprehensive and gives the necessary flexibility to the department to face the unseen challenges that may arise in the future. Even the provision in the bill which creates Congressional Oversight Committee is a testament, 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 rather, to the wisdom of the authors to allow for rapid legislative response to future demands. Added to this, Mr. Speaker, is the fact that the funds of our new heroes in the Overseas Workers Welfare Administration, or OWA, are absolutely safeguarded because Section 19 states that OWA shall continue to function in accordance with its charter. As we all know, Mr. Speaker, the OWA charter, which has been recently enacted, and I was the one who chaired it, Republic Act 10801, ensures strict rules and regulations for the proper use and accounting of the hard-earned funds of our new heroes in the OWA. Finally, Mr. Speaker, we are appropriating no less than $5 billion pesos to the assistance to the Nationals Fund, or the ATN Fund, to administer the maintain by this department. With this amount, the department will be able to address most, if not all, of the legal, the legal and the labor concerns of our overseas Filipinos. We shall never forget that under this administration of President Rodrigo Roa Duterte and the leadership of the House under Speaker Alan Peter Caetano and all of us, my dear colleagues, we all have families, relatives, and friends who are OFW, that this, that this shall become possible. And so, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, this representation who represents the biggest confederation of labor unions, almost half a million nationwide, and as Chairman of our Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs, hereby respectfully appeals for immediate approval of this landmark legislation in this historic day, the 17th of December 2019. Mabuhay ang OFW. Thank you very much and good afternoon.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 5832. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bills Number 5712 and 5832 as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader. Session suspended. Session resumed.
Mr. Speaker, I withdraw my previous motion. And I move that we consider again House Bill Number 5832 as contained in Committee Report Number 142 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 5832 An Act Creating the Department of Filipinos Overseas and Foreign Employment Defining Its Mandate, Powers, and Functions Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the Chairman of the Ways and Means, the Honorable Joey Sardeda, to deliver his sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Joey Sardeda is recognized.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I am here also to recognize the work done by my co-chair of the Technical Working Group assigned by the two honorable committees in order to formulate and draft the House consolidated version on the Department of Filipinos Overseas and Foreign Employment. But let me just answer why the department. One, OFW remittances has been for almost 30 years. The principal source of foreign exchange to sustain the needs of a growing economy. Compared to other sources like BPOs, it may be 32 billion, but the net is 9.7. Electronics is 39, but the net is 9. Tourism is 10, net 10. But if you look at the OFWs, it is 34, net 34. The Philippines is the fourth-largest recipient of OFW remittances after China, India, and Mexico. But in the whole world, it has the highest contribution to GDP at 9.8%. OFWs account for the biggest and most stable source of capital flows, and this is seldom realized by many Filipino. If you compare it to foreign direct investments, if you compare it to all the ODA loans granted to this country, it finances our trade deficit and make up for any shortfall in our balance of payment. It has contributed to the improvement in our creditworthiness and part in our march towards achieving an A credit rating. And thus, it improves the country's access to international capital markets. Moreover, households receiving OFW remittances is actually 23%. And OFW domestic consumption actually accounts for 3.6 trillion out of the 10.4 trillion personal consumption expenditure, or almost 34%. Based on empirical studies, OFW remittances has had the impact of reducing poverty and narrowing the income distribution inequality. In short, without OFW remittances, the country would be poorer, the country would be more unequal. In fact, our estimate, without OFWs, poverty incidence will be higher by 3% and would have been more unequal in terms of income distribution. OFWs account for 35.4% of the top 20%. Pero dunpo sa lowest 20%, there are only 4.3% OFW household, suggesting a very radical and dramatic impact of OFWs in our national life. OFWs invest twice their income in education than non-receiving OFW, and in health also invest 3%, more than the 1.8% for non-OFW, and actually invest more in real property, housing, condominium, and other investment property. Yet, why the department? Because there are risks and social costs that accompany such a contribution. The creation of a Department of Filipinos Overseas and Foreign Employment is a long overdue obligation of our nation-state. It is a proportional policy response to the phenomenon because it is there, not because we're promoting it, but we must confront this risk and the social cost. And more than that, given that they are there, mobilize and harness the potential of overseas Filipinos communities towards nation-building. With this, I ask my colleagues to immediately approve the creation of the Department of Filipinos Overseas and Foreign Employment as a lasting structural legacy of the Duterte administration. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 5832. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the creation of a special committee on persons with disabilities with 20 members and allowing is the jurisdiction. All matters directly and principally relating to the needs, rights, and welfare of persons with disabilities as well as policies and programs that will enhance their active participation and integration in society. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I also move for the creation of a special committee on flagship programs and projects with 20 members and under which the jurisdiction is as follows. All matters directly and principally relating to the monitoring, evaluation, and review of highly strategic infrastructure or programs and projects identified and approved by the NEDA Board Committee on Infrastructure and/or the Investment Coordination Committee and included the General Appropriations Act including to propose possible game-changing and high-impact flagship programs and projects and the necessity of recommending requisite courses of action in relation thereto. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
In coordination, Mr. Speaker, I move that we elect as Chairman on the Special Committee on Persons with Disability, the Honorable Marilu Arroyo. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Likewise, Mr. Speaker, I move to elect the Honorable Charlie Cuhanco as Chairman of the Special Committee on Flagship Programs and Projects. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there be no other matters. I move that we suspend session until December 18 of 2019 at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended.